Where?
Has she said something?
I don't think so.
Good evening, at seven o'clock and welcome to the July 3rd, 2018 Wabashua City Council Meeting. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
We have two council members absent this evening, both in good health, I believe. John Friedmeyer is not here, Craig Falcom is not here. All other council members are here. Guest speakers, we have none listed. Public comment, anyone in the audience like to address the council on any topic? Seeing none, we'll go right to changes and additions to the agenda, council members. I'm going to propose we take 7.1 and have the Personnel Committee review this before we act on it.
7.1, what are you talking about?
I mean, 8.1?
10.7, Dean, I'm sorry. General Business Item 10.7. The Leave Request Amendment. I believe that should pass by our Personnel Committee first. Any objection?
I object.
Okay.
I think we should just keep it on the agenda and go with it.
Okay. Anyone else object?
I do too.
You object? Alright. So, objections, Moyer and Schmidt.
I've got something to add to the consent agenda.
I did not hear that.
Something to add to the consent agenda.
Okay.
It's a bingo application for the American Legion Auxiliary for Riverboat Days.
Alright. Motion to approve agenda as is?
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No? That passes by majority. Mayor's presentation tonight, I just wish everyone safe 4th of July, I drive around the city and the yards look beautiful and things are kept up. It's just a pretty, pretty time of the year. Committee reports, John is gone, so we would, does someone have a Port Authority Committee report? Craig is gone, anyone on Planning Commission? Brian?
Yeah, I got a few things. I attended the Fireman's Meeting, it was the day after our last City Council Meeting. Just to see how they conducted business, did things. Darren invited us to go. So they made us dinner and kind of the reason they had us there was for the new firefighters. TJ Dorn, Scott Lingold, Tendine, Corey Lewandowski, Matt Wabi and Ryan Flack completed firefighter 1, 2, and hazmat in less than six months, so they're certified now. And that was kind of the reason, and just to expose us to what they do. Stayed for the meeting and it runs pretty much like we run our meetings, so. Did that. We had our Dennis File sticker Memorial Baseball Tournament with parent volunteers and kids from the community and then teams from All Overcome, it's an annual thing and that went very well. That's really good for our community. Utilities met today, it's just total business as usual, nothing, nothing special there. And then also, we had our first Personnel Committee meeting. Roland and I and John met. The full committee will be Sue and Chad as well. Pretty wanted one meeting to lay the groundwork of what exactly we're going to do. So we brainstormed, I took minutes and those are available if anybody wants to read them. Just what we talked about, didn't make any final decisions and planned to meet again with the full committee and just kind of hone down what we're all about, what we're going to do and then meet quarterly and as needed after that. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions for Brian? Any other reports or questions at this time? If not, Administrator's Report?
Gene, can you give ambulance?
Tony, I'm sorry.
Nope, you go first. Evening Mayor and Council. We were meeting a couple weeks ago, we talked about planting a couple new trees down in Heritage Park. We had some ash trees that were down there that we took out. And so we just wanted to get some really nice trees that are going to fit in that area. I brought forth a request from somebody in town here to donate some possible parkland. So we are doing some checking on what we can do, what we can't do. And we're going to dig into that and then maybe that'll come forward to the City Council. Street Commission did not meet today, we had almost nothing for the agenda, so we took the month off and that's all I got. Unless anybody's got any questions.
Thank you, Tony. Chad?
Gene, do a quick ambulance update?
Evening Mayor and Council. Just to touch on a few things, you guys have in your packets this grant agreement for Homeland Security Emergency Management. It's part of the Radiological Emergency Preparedness Grant. It's $10,000 over two years. Just want to let you guys know, it just covers the wages and some of the materials that we use for down there, so. And you guys need to look through it or have any questions like that on that, just please ask. For the month of June, we had 41 runs and we're still maintaining over 80% from transfers out of St. Elizabeth's ER. So you guys probably also seen in the newspaper, as of today, the EMS National Bike Ride came through Wabashua. Want to thank them for reaching out to us and they were a stop there and it was actually very nice. It's a memorial bike ride for any fallen, fallen EMS personnel, firefighters, police, anything to do with emergency services. So they had a list of names, they ran it off and they had a ceremony there, so it was pretty nice. So last commission did not meet, the EMS Commission did not meet due to a lot of scheduling conflicts. So the only other thing I have is I have our license now for the 2018 to 2020 for the ambulance service. So that was renewed and it was approved and I got it in the mail not long ago, so. But not, any questions? Try to keep it quick.
I got a couple of quick things, we've been ramping up the discussions on the bonding, working with the attorneys and Mr. Thompson, Rolf as well. Just trying to figure out how to get the money and all the stuff that we're going to need to do to get that going. Had some continued discussions with the Corps. We have a meeting on July 9th. Craig can't be there and I don't know if another council person would be interested in sitting down. It's going to be the first, kind of the first time talking about actual plan, what the Corps is thinking. So it's kind of the concrete, you know, here's what we've come up with kind of idea. We've been, this will be a series of meetings then with the Conners and us to get everything squared away before the plan comes out and they're thinking maybe October-ish for that. If you're interested, just let me know and I'll give you the particulars to sit in on that. Tony and I got an email this morning for the local road improvement program. If you remember, we had applied for a grant for that and we weren't successful. However, they have 35 million in undolled out money that they're looking at getting out. So we're going to send a letter to reconsider. That's where we had work on 12th Street, the lower part of 12th Street, over by Shields. The county was a partner with us on Bridge and County 30, kind of rearranging that. So we're going to get that letter sent off to get them to give that back or to again. Obviously, we've been dealing with the 13-foot crest again of the river. Plant's been holding steady, we've seen less per average flows due to the sewer lining, so. But other than that, I don't think there was any other big headaches in town, just your standard putting out barricades and bringing them back in, cones and everything else, so, but we'll have some cleanup when she goes down, so.
I did read on the League of Minnesota website where the state allotted, I don't know how many millions for populations under 5,000 and the city Wabashua was in there for like 21,000.
Yeah, that's that annual amount that we get, yep.
So that's nice.
Yeah, that'll be, that'll help, we've been putting that right into the capital improvement plan. So, and it's something that we haven't budgeted for because it's a year-to-year thing.
Right.
We're not sure that it, if it was coming or not, so on the revenue side, we haven't accounted for that, so.
That's it? Any questions to Chad? Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, which tonight is approved of the January, June 5th Regular Minutes, Resolution Appointing Election Judges for 2018.
Mayor Hall, can I interrupt for a second? Craig Falcom wanted me to add to the minutes his clarification points from the MOU from the last meeting. So I added it, I put it on everybody's desk, so if you want to approve Craig Falcom's clarifications to the MOU from the last minute, I will add those to the minutes.
Is that what the sheet is, right here?
Yes, yes. I put the bullet points of all his clarifications from the last minute. And he was requesting that we add that to the minutes, so if Council so approves, I will add that to the minutes.
There's nothing out of the ordinary in this, is there?
Just recaps what he said in the meeting?
Yeah. So that would be a change to the minutes. Any other, Sue?
No.
Okay, then Resolution Appointing Election Judges for 2018, I think there are 51 on the list that I saw. Temporary on-sale license application for Riverboat Days. Resolution for Assessment of Unpaid Utility Charges for parcel number 27 or whatever. Homeland Security and Emergency Management Grant Application Approval for the Ambulance Department. St. Elizabeth, Minnesota Lawful Gambling Application for Bingo. Revised PIP and Manufacturing TIF Contract. Hoppy Girl Brewing LLC Brew Pub Off-Sale Application and Warrants.
And the American Legion.
Can you read that loudly?
The American Legion Auxiliary Post 50, their bingo application for Riverboat Days.
And what day is that?
July 28th.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve the warrants?
So moved.
I'll second.
Discussion, all in favor? We don't have discussion. I, passed unanimously. Okay, public hearing, none. General Business, one, the second reading of the zoning ordinance amendments. Attaches a memo from Christie Clark, City Planner, and the proposed amended zoning ordinance to be considered for approval at this meeting. Action required, a motion approving the amendments to the City Code 305 zoning ordinance as presented.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Overall, it didn't look like there were many amendments, there were certainly some. Okay, motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, passed unanimously. NRG, Energy Solar Garden Solicitor Permit.
Yes, we have someone who wants to solicit for solar garden, again for NRG. We've learned from last year and prior years that we used to do transient merchant licensing, that was wrong. So they are considered solicitors and we cannot charge them a fee and we cannot deny them to go door to door. The only thing a city can do is, is set hours. So, and also, we need to come up with a permit system at the city. So when other solicitors come, it's just an administrative thing. So we'll come back at another council meeting so you guys can determine hours that will be set in stone. We'll have to decide something for this gentleman tonight, but we'll bring it back to, we can come up with a better plan but, and a permitting system, so that's what we'll be doing. And then also, I would like staff permission to work with the city attorney to update our peddler solicitors and transient merchants City Code before we send it off to be codified.
Did he suggest hours?
No, he did not.
Didn't?
No.
Be good to have a frame of reference for what they normally, or what they even want. Because it says if they don't like what we give them, they could come back and.
Well, that's only if you're too restrictive, I, you know, you'd have to be really restrictive.
Yeah.
For that to happen.
I just, nine to four was rattling around in my head, I don't know if that's too short of a time. A lot of people aren't home between those hours. I don't know, I wouldn't like the idea of getting my doorbell ring when I'm having dinner, 8 o'clock at night either.
Yeah, I would agree. I would agree with that.
So we could go nine to four or nine to five?
Then it kind of restricts what he wants to do, I mean, most people aren't, are working or something. So it's kind of like putting a big restriction, he's not going to be able, he won't get any business if no one's home. So I think you need maybe something to like three to six or something, or three to seven, or.
I wish they were here.
The daytime people.
That he couldn't, that they couldn't solicit three to.
They could, that's the time they should solicit.
Yeah.
If they want business and if it's, if it's a good program.
They have to have people to talk to.
Yeah, then if, if it runs, Brian, I think from nine to four, a lot of people are going to miss it.
First of all, how do we know this guy's even legit?
It will have to go through a full police background check, like we do the transient merchants.
Okay.
So once you approve it, then we'll go to Joe and he will do his background and.
Check him out.
So we can deny?
No, well, I guess if.
He's a felon or something.
Yeah, if he's a mass murderer.
You'd have to work with the city attorney if something like that popped up.
Do you want to stay with nine to four?
It was just a suggestion, I, I'm open to anything really. I wish they were here to ask what they wanted so we knew what, what was best for them.
I would suggest nine to seven. It's only going to be once, it's not like they're going to knock on your door every night.
Yeah.
And if they get to be a problem, then our police, they just report it to us or report it to the police department and we can deal with it that way.
Oh, and then also, I added, residents can put cards in their doors or windows if they do not want solicitors to come. They can put that place card in their window or in their front door, I think it says. That they, they do not want solicitors and then they are not permitted to approach their property. So I mean, there are some conditions for residents that they can use if they don't want to be bothered by solicitors.
Yeah, speaking about that, it talked about like a typeface and all that. Most residents aren't going to understand what that means.
We can help them at City Hall with that.
You probably put a notice like that on the back of the water bill too, explain that.
Okay, sure.
Okay, if we have to put in hours nine to seven, acceptable? Okay. So, a motion authorizing staff to work with city attorney in Section 905 Peddlers. A motion authorizing NRG Energy Representative, Mr. Doug McLaughlin, to solicit for solar enrollment between the hours of 9:00 AM and 7:00 PM.
I'll move.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, passed unanimously. Department of Homeland Security's Storage Agreement?
This has been something we, we actually talked about when we built the city garage addition, was being able to move the reception center trailers onto city property, actually where they're, where they would be used. And now we've worked with Department of Homeland Security and put forward a five-year license. It has to be called a license and not a lease, for $550 a month to lease that space from the city to keep those trailers in temperature controlled. That's why it needs the heated storage and, and we worked with our cost, we tried to break down our cost per square foot up at that building and, and looked at additional costs across the market for storage and that's what we came up with, with DHHS, so. That's what we have in front of us.
So we're making money on the deal?
Yes, sir.
Excellent.
Thirty-some thousand over five years.
Okay, so this is a license agreement?
This has went through our attorney as well.
I'll make motion to.
A second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion made in second to approve the lease discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, passed unanimously. Ruger Park Fence Agreement?
I can kick this off, Mayor. Myself, Brian and Christie Clark did a site visit and met with.
I'd like to speak on that.
Yeah, yep, I'm just going to kick this off, Jim, and then when you get up there, we'll be good. We went through all the conditions that were put forth in the legal binding agreement that we, we did through arbitration and marked a bunch of X's, got everything crossed off, we've got it all documented. The issue where that was remaining, if you remember, was at first a wooden fence and then, and then it was moved to a, Mr. Ray Merkem asked for a, a chain link fence with slats in it and now he's requesting just the chain link fence. I don't know if anyone had a chance to go up there and look around, but there's, there's a lot of shrubbery being placed along that fence line. That exists today, so Jim, do you want to talk a little bit?
Can I add to that real quick?
Go ahead, Dean.
Does any councilman?
Just a second, Jim.
One second, Jim.
One second.
Okay.
I was on the council, as was Steve, when this came up last time. And we agreed to put up a steel fence, let Jim put up a steel fence. We also agreed at that meeting to not put, not have him put those slats in. We had slats over at the pool and they, they weatherize, they fall apart, they look like crap. And I, I remember us discussing that and agreeing to that, I just didn't get them in the minutes, so. So I just want to let you guys know what was discussed and, and it was agreed to, you know, not to put the slats up there, so.
Go ahead, Jim.
City council persons, Mayor, Senator Smith, Hall, Chad Springer, Patty. The reason I'm here, there's a little gray area on this fencing project up here and I'd like to get that clarified because of the protesters we had before and I don't want to rattle their feathers again. So the reason I put, I, I'm reluctant to put in ribbons in that fencing is going to, who's going to be liable for the railroad, you're, you're cutting down the view from trains coming through there. And that's a safety problem, that could be a problem. And then the other thing is, if, if a wood fence was put in there, who's going to maintain that fence? You know, wood, they rot. I put in a fence that's good for, for 50, 60 years, you know, or more. So that's the reason I, I came down and I'd like to explain that, that this, why put in a fence that's going to be ongoing maintenance? When they got fences throughout the country that are steel fencing? The other thing that's a gray area on is I put $50,000 down to do business at this facility. Is this a, is this going to be an ongoing thing that anybody comes in to do business in Wabashua? They're going to get zapped thousands of dollars? If it is, you might as well save your money and the $20,000 that you put in for advertising to create business in the town because they won't be coming. So, and it was, was that, is there a... Is this legal in the first place that they could put these, these costs on there? Is that in the charter or in the, in the ordinance that they can do that? Put all these on private property? We say they're telling, I got to put hard surface flooring or throwing roads in, which I did. But has the city got that authorization to come in and tell somebody they got to have a hard surface road in every establishment? If they did, they forgot the last 20 years of doing it. So if, if the city wants that ribbon fence, I can put it in there, but they're going to be chasing it all over that park for years to come, you know, that first wind comes up, they're gone, them ribbons. And who's going to be, pay for that continual expense? You know? And that's all I got to say.
Jim, I have a quick question. You started listing the, the reasons, the railroad, cutting down view for, for the railroad, that was number one?
What was that again, do you hear?
Sure. You mentioned that it cuts down the view for the railroad if you put in slats?
Yes, I did.
Okay. And wood rots?
That's right.
There'd be high maintenance? And Jim, the next one I didn't understand, did you say we would lose business?
See, I feel we'd lose business if they go on with the guidelines that I had to adopt to is charging for my own establishment $50,000 I had to pay upfront to do business in Wabashua. I think that's the wrong thing because the city pays $20 a year in taxpayers' money for advertising to bring business into Wabashua. They, they did it when I was on the council and I'm sure it's still going. But advertise for business. But if, if you continue this way, you're never going to get nobody to come in town and do business. Paying, paying these figures that the people, that the council comes up with. And, and the other thing is, is this in the ordinance or is there an ordinance to this fact that the city's got to, can charge that kind of figure?
I don't have.
The $50,000 is the court ordered settlement through the arbitration process that we had.
Yeah.
So it was through the whole case, right? I mean, that's, that was one of the agreements when we left that room that night, or that morning.
One of the agreements was that the city's representative swore under oath and she raised her hand quite high because I can remember, I thought she'd reached hers. And she wanted the, the meeting up there and not out to the public. I said, what was the reason for that? Why did that happen to me? Why wasn't this, so the city matter, why can't the city people know about it? And she broke, she broke the oath by putting it in the papers the next day.
Is that property where the fence is on, is that zoned industrial?
It's actually Jim's property, yeah.
But it's zoned industrial, so I mean, if you read our city ordinances, industrial properties have to be screened, have to have a screen fence, I was just reading, it says screening.
This, this court case and the settlement document trumps all of our ordinances.
Trump's ordinances?
Yep.
And if you listen, Pete Extran, our past city attorney, he addressed the council on this here that, that you go against the railroad, you're going against the commerce law. That, that preempts over state, federal guidelines. And the people didn't. And the people didn't listen to him, so the city got a big bill because of that. So anyway, that's all I have to say.
And with that, with that said, like I said, when I first got back on the council, this, this came up, this will be a wood fence, we agreed to, to chain link fence. And in that discussion, we discussed the ribbon, or whatever you call it, the slats, or whatever you call it. And we, I, 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 I remember us saying that he didn't have to install those also. It just didn't get in the minutes, I don't think.
And, yeah, the motion, maybe we didn't pick up on it when the motion was made and it went through, but I do remember dialogue about it.
Yeah.
Just, but I don't remember the outcome.
There is a lot of vegetation on the...
I mean, I was down there looking at it today, I mean, I, I don't really, either way, but I mean, what do you think about it over there? 'Cause it's like, that's our park on the west side, you know? It doesn't, I mean, looking from, out from the park, it doesn't look that great. I mean, it would be better if it was a slatted fence or something, but, you know, I don't see any big harm in it, if it's not.
What, what I've seen, I walk Gambia every single day, every single morning, and if there's a, a vehicle or a pickup coming out of Jim's property, you can see that from far away with slotted fence. And then you get walkers back in that area, too. And if he had a slotted fence, now you're, you got a blind spot, so. And we do have vegetation on our side of the fence to kinda filter stuff, too, so.
I think the fence was basically for the safety of anybody playing in the park. And it gets to me is, on my side, I had to fence it, but the other three sides of the park are open. You know, the kids out there, there probably some poor parenting up there, they play in the middle of the yard and everything up there, but, which is not the city's problem, but there's a lot of, I think there's an accident already happened there on the other three sides. And it probably wouldn't hurt to...
Here to put up a fence all the way around?
Huh?
Here to put up a fence all the way around?
Yeah, yeah, but the thing is that, you know, maybe we guys should notify the people up there, if they're gonna be playing that park, they should be a little more, better parenting, 'cause them kids are out there bicycling that first time around, making the wheels go around, you know? But I don't wanna get in that mess, though.
So where do we go from here?
It's just a...
Make a motion.
Make a motion for the slats or not the slats.
Okay.
Or I suppose you do nothing, and it just reverts back to what was agreed upon by the previous council.
Does the CUP need to be amended, then, to take that out?
We will just use the minutes and note it on, just like we did, just like it exists today with the amendment from the first time.
Okay.
And we'll just put this right in there.
I will make a motion to not require the slats.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, discussion? Dean, why did, why were the slats included the first time around?
Because, uh...
They weren't matched.
When, when they went out for, I think when Jim went out for bids on, on that, there was discussion on it, but I don't remember what the cost was, but...
Well, the cost was...
We used to have slats around the pool, all the way around the pool, I think. And they just looked horrible, so, and, so, you know.
The thing, the reason for the fence in the first place was for safety. We, we met that criteria. But if it's gonna be for looks, there are cities that consider it on the looks up there, why'd they put a, I'll say privy right by the fence?
Will this require a change in the ordinance?
No, no, this is just attached to the CUP. We got that guidance from the attorney.
We had a similar discussion years ago on the Eagle Center fence. They have a, a galvanized black fence, and there was discussion on slats for those, too, and it didn't go anywhere because of...
Where I had the concern on the slats, or the ribbons, is there's about 450 feet of fencing that put in there, and when you come up that road with your car sitting down in the seat, if there's a train coming there, you couldn't, you can see way to the depot now, but you couldn't see it just through the intersection now. And so come, I just do not have it, or I don't want the liability, or is what I don't want.
The whole issue was Jim would be hauling in there with big trucks, semi-trucks, and people were worried that somebody would chase a ball out there from Brugger Park and get run over by a big truck. And that's how the whole fence thing got started.
What if, what if he gets squished by the first coming up the street, the other three sides, before they get to him?
I guess that's somebody else's problem, Jim. But that's how this all got started, then they thought they wanted a wood fence, which didn't make any sense at all. And we agreed to allow him to put in a chain link fence.
Okay.
Further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Jim, do you want that paperwork back?
What's that?
Got it there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I could stand.
Go.
Jim, good to see ya.
Nice to be here again. I see you did a little decorating here. Was that, that Kusick's, the meeting's hitting that loud?
National Eagle Center Development Agreement Extension Request is next on the agenda, ten point five.
This is an extension of one of the terms that we had put, actually, we had put in there originally, that they'll have the right to extend, and they're asking to extend the term where the city and the NEC have approved and specifications for the project with preliminary plans and specs for the project submitted by the NEC by December 31st of 2018. That originally was June 30th, and the final approval of such plans and specs submitted by June 30th of 2019. So that, it's just changing 2.3A to those dates of the existing development agreement. And all the other legal information that's required for an amendment.
Motion to agree to the extension request?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Oppose, same sign, passed unanimously. Christmas decorations discussion?
I can answer one question from the previous week, and, you know, how, how will they get tax deductible donations and that type of stuff, and who will own it? We will own it, the city will own it, the city will take the donations, and we will do the purchasing, and, and they will be owned by the city, and that's just the easiest way to do it.
Perfect, that's what I was hoping.
It falls under our insurance and that type of stuff, then, too, so. And Tony and I have talked about that, and Sue, we've all three talked about that as well, so, so that answers that question.
Yeah, 'cause that was the biggest concern last month.
Yep.
Was...
If we're gonna be storing them, we're gonna be putting them up, we're gonna be maintaining them, it's better to have us own it, just like any of our other infrastructure, I guess. I know we, Roland and I have been kinda going back and forth since this whole thing started about who's gonna pay and donations and everything, and I think first of all, I'd like to, to thank you for going through all the work and, and getting people lined up and getting the group started and getting pricing and quotes, and I think we got it narrowed down to, the sheet that I handed out had a couple changes on here. I wanted to take out the two donated amounts, just to give you an idea, that we're getting some of this already donated, so Carolyn Cleese is donating $2,400 of money for the snowman banners, and then she's also getting banners for the summertime. We, we met with a group, a subgroup of people from the city staff, we came up with, we're gonna change the banners four times a year, and that's it. So there'll be four seasons. And I guess after we get all this done, there'll be Septoberfest, Eagle Center banners, and then the Christmas, the Christmas ones, and there was a fourth?
Winter one.
Winter, yeah.
The snowmen. There won't be a Christmas banner, it'd be the wreaths.
Right.
When we get to that, yeah, the other.
So we kinda got it sorted out. We had some input from the park board, they were, I emailed it out to them, I did not get it on the agenda, but I heard back from majority of the group, just through email, said, "Run with it, looks good." And so we're looking tonight to hopefully get some money to get this going. And then in the meantime, I talked to Roland, and like Chad's aware of it, too, we were gonna sell some street signs, some old street signs, and then the old Eagle banners and Main Street banners, we, you know, they're, they're in storage, we're not gonna be using them anymore. A lot of people would like to pick them up, hang them in their garage or whatever. So we, we had to come up with a price, I think it was 25 bucks for each banner or sign. We're gonna get on Facebook Craigslist, get it advertised, city website, maybe put that money back into the decoration fund. So I think that would help, you know, this, not immediately, but for next year. And she's already had some money donated, the word's getting out, so people want decorations there. I think after it got in the minutes, you know, and, and some TV a little bit, it's, people are calling, get them done, you know, let's get some new ones, and so, we're looking tonight to...
I was just saying to clarify, so the park board's gonna be the home of all this? Now, they're gonna kinda be the body that does the initial stuff going forward and all that?
I think you'll probably keep the group going.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
And they could go through the park board.
Yeah.
And they, because they want, yeah, we're all excited about it, we all wanna be involved and also help revamp the existing decorations that we have, and...
Yep, the ones we, they call them sprays, and we hang them on every other pole, and they're kinda faded, so we're gonna do some touch-up paint on the bows, and we're gonna get some LED lights, and get rid of the old, uh, light bulbs that provide just kind of a glow that you don't even see. And then there's the new wraps, instead of green, with what looked like blue LED lights, will be white with silver and red wrap around the poles, so. And with that, the banners and the updated sprays, I think it'll look pretty nice down there. Going forward, you know, we have some more plans that'll come next year, maybe budget time we can talk, if we're gonna have an amount or see how the donations are coming in. We got an artist that's gonna paint the, the wood stencils, and they'll be put up in some of the parks or public areas around town, so it's kinda the start.
It's, it's, uh, it's really gotten people talking around town, and just today, I, I met with the two residents, and, and they were throwing out ideas, and I'm like, well, you know, I'll have to get those ideas to, and all that, and...
Oh, yes.
It's, 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 it's really rejuvenated this, this whole Christmas thing, so.
We just hate to see when Septoberfest ends, the banners come down, the town looks like a ghost town sometimes, and, and maybe this'll spruce it up for the, for the winter a little bit more.
Yeah, and I guess my goal is to continue to bring those visitors back, 'cause so many of them expect our Christmas to be as nice as, festive as Septoberfest. And then the other part that I am trying to do is get the community to come out more together, like the lighting of the tree and Heritage Park, and, you know, so, community and visitors as well.
So we're looking tonight for, the total on this sheet's 5,900, I know that we had talked about 5,000, it would be out of the general fund, and I don't know what's on, we can, we can work with 5,000 and maybe shrink the numbers a little bit on some of the wraps or cut back on some lights, it's...
This doesn't include donations coming in, other donations?
No.
So if you did an up to an amount, if the council did an up to amount?
Good.
Then we could offset that with the donations?
And I'll make that motion for, uh...
She's gonna order, sorry, Dean, she's gonna order, you know, like, by August.
We have to commit to these things by August 1st to continue, to get this pricing.
Yep.
As it gets closer to the seasons, the prices continue to rise, so...
It's like 25% off?
Right, and we need to put, we would just need to put like 25% down, and I think with Carolyn paying for the banners, we would be very close to...
That already?
Yes.
That'll give time for more money to roll in if you need it.
Exactly.
So up to...
I'll, I'll make motion to, uh, uh, budget 5,903 for this year for Christmas Titan.
I'll second.
Further discussion?
Yes. I'm just kinda, I'm not real happy with spending the tax dollars on this kinda stuff. We're gonna be doing Eagle Center construction for the next probably two, three years. It's gonna be a mess downtown, if you've ever seen construction. It seems to me, I, I just don't like the idea of spending tax dollars on this kinda stuff. I mean, if you can get donations and raise, go do a GoFundMe thing or something, and get a, raise your money that way. Or I just read something in the Rochester paper, and you guys probably should know about it already, but it's small town grant applications through the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation, seeking applications from towns with less than 5,000 people, and it's for past award-winning developments, include community gardens, trail systems, a multicultural festival, and town identity. This, this sounds like town identity stuff, I mean...
Yeah, I saw that as well.
Project funding requests up to $10,000, but will be requested. I mean, why aren't you pursuing grants and stuff like that instead of taxpayer dollars? I mean, unless, Tony, you wanna take it out of Ashmore budget, you know? I just don't, you know, like I said, and I haven't been here that long, but I know when I go in downtown in the wintertime, there's no one there. We don't have a highway going through downtown like Red Wing and Lake City where people get the ooh-ah at the decorations. I mean, you go down there in the wintertime, it's dead, there's no one there. So I just, I don't like, right now, between the construction budget and coming up and spending the tax dollars and opportunities for grants and stuff, get the money for that way.
We, we are applying to the, or the Wabash Foundation, you know, for a certain amount, but it's not gonna cover...
Well, like I said, this one here is...
We're doing, we are, the city is making application for that, it's just a matter of narrowing down what we wanna apply for.
And I have applied to them for the splash pad, and, you know, I didn't get the full amount.
Right.
I mean, you might get $500 or $1,000, but that's not, maybe get one block of decorations done. That's kinda why we're here to get the amount covered, you know, and hopefully money will come in to help cut that number down, but, and it...
And this is just for the first year, you know, it's a five-year plan.
Yeah, and I think the last time you were here, it was getting up to like 20 grand or something, some huge, large number.
Well, that's the five ra, the five-year plan, yes.
Yeah, so after five years, it was gonna be $20,000 to buy more stuff. I mean, when does it stop?
It's not guaranteed, I mean, everything's fluid, it can change, too, but basically, this stuff is like the basic, the, the other stuff that's, I mean, that's, it's kind of an add-on, if you would, but...
I guess I'm not that sophisticated.
I know.
It doesn't throw me seeing these decorations.
Or maybe more people drive through if it was lit up, who knows?
Do you like the Septoberfest decorations?
Sure, they're fine, they look nice.
And that's what we're also trying to...
But there, there's a draw of people there, in the wintertime, there's, there's no one in town, there's nothing going on.
Well, this is what, what we're attempting to do, to draw those people back.
I don't think they're gonna be coming for the decorations.
Maybe it's right, I don't know.
Further discussion, anyone else?
Dean, is your motion to expend the 59, or is it up to 59?
5,903.
Well, it's not up to, it's just, you're, you're author, you wanna authorize the full 5,900?
Well, it's, all right, I, I'll clarify that, up to 50.
Okay.
Both donations come in.
Okay.
I'll amend my second to fit that.
Okay.
Further discussion?
Um, yes, if individuals wanna donate, they donate to, they're into the city, and it would be in for Christmas decorations, I suppose, all right?
Those donations are deductible? All right.
Probably rule this vote.
Woodley?
Yes.
Sala?
No.
Moit?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes.
Schmidt?
No.
That vote was three, two in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're moving on to the last item in general business, leave request amendment. As mentioned in the September 21st... As mentioned in the, uh, September twenty-first, uh, two thousand and eighteen special meeting, Administrator Springer is requesting his leave balances to be reset as of June fifth. In addition, while Administrator Springer was out on medical leave in March and April and incorrectly coded eighty hours of medical leave as vacation time due to not knowing the exact balances he was out of the office. He is requesting to reclassify the vacation time as medical leave in accordance with his physician's orders to be out of the office. Action required, a motion resetting and leave balances for Administrator Springer to the June fifth levels and reclassifying eighty hours of vacation time to medical leave.
I just want to have one quick thing, is, um, is there some reason we don't have exact, no exact balances of people's leave and vacation time? And if there is, are you guys going to do anything systematically, like getting in Kronos or getting in?
We know it all, I mean, we, we know everyone's leave balances and things.
Okay, I just want to make sure that's not.
Oh, I was, I was at home.
Right, right, right.
Yeah.
I understand the situation, but I'm just saying that is this something for the whole city that there's problems with the leave, people keeping track of that?
No.
If not, I mean.
No, it was, it's on everyone's time, yeah, pace of, but I, I had thought that I was lower than what I was when I was at home and I called Patty and had her put it in that way, um, when I was.
We need a motion approving the resetting of the leave balances for Administrator Springer to the June fifth levels and reclassifying eighty hours of vacation time to medical leave.
Second.
Motion made by Sulla, seconded by Moier. Discussion? I've been your mayor for seven and a half years, ninety months, three hundred and ninety weeks. In both elections, I received over ninety percent of the votes. A thousand in my first election, over eight hundred in the second, when the vote was down. As mayor, I feel it's my job to do the right thing for the citizens of Wabashaw. And sometimes I have to make a decision to do the right thing or the thing. To reinstate Mr. Springer's time off is not the right thing. It's absolutely the wrong thing to do. If you wish, I can go all the way back to the beginning of the issue when a fellow council member asked me to meet with him at a local park. He advised me of certain allegations being made. These allegations were agreed by two council members enough to contact our city attorney. By charter, the mayor has oversight of administration. And I felt it necessary to get advice, legal advice. And when I got the response, legal set into motion a plan to address the allegations. On June fifth at eight o'clock in the morning, I received a phone call from the city attorney instructing me to advise Mr. to cease talking to anyone about a certain issue. I was at the golf club preparing to play senior golf when the call came in. After golf, at approximately eleven twenty-five AM on six five, I went to city hall, met the administrator and informed him that he was not to talk to anyone about the issue. The meeting was brief, it was very brief. The administrator had a couple questions as to who and why. I did not answer the who and don't remember clearly a response to why, if I answered at all. That same day, I received an email from administrator saying he would be using accrued flex time to deal with the impact of being put on investigation. I assure you, I never delivered that message. No one said he was being put on investigation. Perhaps some allegations were being looked into, investigated, but the administrator was never informed that he was under suspension or investigation. Mr. Springer, on his own, decided to take time off from approximately six five eighteen until sometime after six twenty-one. He was not directed to do so by any city official, to the best of my knowledge. No council member has the authority on his own to direct a suspension. This only can be done with full council approval. So Mr. Springer took time off on his own volition. No special approval and now wants that time reinstated. The reinstatement would be absolutely wrong. Further. None, uh, roll call.
Uh, Moier?
Yes.
Woodley?
Yes.
Sulla?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Meyer Hall?
No. That vote was, uh, Sulla, Woodley, Moier, Schmidt, yes, and Hall, no. Okay, we're into donations, resolution accepting donations. And there are many. Library fifty, sixty dollars in memory of Charles Schmidt by Christina Richardson and family. Library ninety dollars in memory of Charles and Mary O'Brien, Bev Hall and Amy Glomsky. Library twenty-five dollars in memory of Leslie Sikora's mother by Mickey Nelson and Roland Hall. Library twenty dollars in memory of Marcella Marku by Mike and Deb Smith. Library reading program, five hundred and seventy-five dollars from the Rotary Club of Minnesota of Wabashaw. Ninety-three dollars and seventy-five cents, area English handbell ringers. Fireworks, two hundred and fifty dollars for State Bank employees. Fireworks, two fifty, First Aid Bank. Pool splash pad, fifty dollars, a Bob Shield donation deducted from a bill. Timish Electric donated labor at the athletic field. Ambulance department training mannequin valued at twenty-five hundred dollars by Sean and Gina Spencer. Motion to accept the donations?
That one donation from, uh, Timish Electric was a little over nine hundred, so I just wanted to for, uh, for the athletic field.
For the athletic field.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Motion to accept?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Objecting, same sign, pass unanimously. Further announcements, Sue?
No.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.